Here.
O'Brien, Burke, and.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Canning.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
Thank you.
I apologize if any of this is misleading to the finance committee. We have time limit, so I apologize for that.
Accepted.
Okay. Review and approve the minutes from the special board meeting. Those would be three separate motions. The chair would entertain three motions. One is to approve the special board meeting minutes from August 24th, which was the joint plan commission board meeting, then the special board meeting of September 20th, which was the referendum language, then the minutes from the regular board meeting of September 5, 2006. You pointing out something?
With that change.
Yeah, okay, we have to change right away. We're in the, which one?
September 20th.
Okay, so, minutes from September 20th. And that would be the special board meeting. That was where we just approved the language for the referendum.
Thursday instead of Wednesday.
Okay, down at the one, two, three.
You didn't.
Paragraph called November 2006 Finance and Board Meeting Date. The meeting will be moved to Thursday, November 2. Is that right? The minutes say that it was Wednesday. It's actually Thursday. Okay, that date was changed because of the elections. Okay, so we have that correction. Were there any other corrections in the minutes? Okay. If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the special board meeting from August 24th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or corrections? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the special board minutes, special board meeting minutes from September 20th. That was the language we just corrected.
I'll so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or comments? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 5, 2006.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular board trustees meeting held on Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any other comments or corrections? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 5, 2006.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular board trustees meeting held on Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any other comments or corrections? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 5, 2006.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular board trustees meeting held on Tuesday, September 5th at 7:00 PM as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any other comments or corrections? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Comments from the floor? John, you're the only visitor tonight. Did you want to talk for a while?
No.
Okay. You're gonna have to take me up on that one of these times, John.
Plan Commission.
And I don't believe there's anybody here from the Plan Commission, so we'll not spend any time on that portion of the agenda. Finance Committee Recommendation Claims. The Finance Committee Recommend.
I'll make a.
Paying the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve September non-recurring claims totaling fourteen thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions regarding the claims for the month? If not, then we'll do a roll call vote to approve.
Yes.
Whalen.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Zappa.
Yes.
Canning.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Arson.
Yes.
2006 Budget Year End Projections. Did you want to just summarize very quickly what we talked about in finance for that?
Sure. I just pulled together with the different department heads, the projected year end numbers to get an idea of where we're gonna end up with at the end of the year, and they are in your board packets for you to review.
2007 Budget. I think what we concluded finance was we should probably set a date in October when we could get together as a board to do that, to take an initial look at the consolidated budget for 2007. If we go to the very, very last section of our three-ring binders and if you look at October, see if we can find a mutual date whereby the data would be available to look at, as well as when we could all get together.
Just sometime in the week of the third.
Okay. Pick a date.
I don't have a preference.
Okay. Let's see. How about Tuesday, the 24th?
It's 24th.
Okay. Or is there any reason why we'd want to have something done prior to that? Just in terms of getting, or did we rather have, let's see, all of the committees will have met. Go ahead.
It would allow me a little more time, because once you guys give me the numbers to put it together, so that the first of November, because our meeting is, what, the second, so I'd have a little bit more time to be able to get that put together.
Okay. So the 24th is okay with you?
Oh, I thought you were talking about maybe even earlier.
What's the special board meeting on Wednesday or first?
Oh, that you can't.
That is the informational meeting regarding the referendum on the village addition village proposal.
Okay.
Technically, because anytime you get the board together in a room to talk about a municipal topic, by definition, you've called a board meeting, okay?
Okay.
So, yes, it is an informational meeting. I think George is gonna be handling most of the communications, but because the board will all be there, just by definition constitutes a board meeting, so you got a notice of as such. Okay.
So Larry, the meeting on October 5th and the one on November 1st are relatively the same.
They are identical.
Okay.
Well, maybe not.
It depends on the questions that come up on Thursday.
And whatever progress is made in between.
But they're the two informational meetings, okay? But legally, we have to characterize them as a board meeting, because the board is gonna be there. And even if we're all just sitting there for the purpose of taking in information for subsequent decision-making, that constitutes a board meeting, okay? So you just have to notice it as such, that's all.
There won't, and there will be no actions taken at those meetings.
No action taken. And that has been so noted in the agenda that's been issued. Okay. So, coming back to, I know, I'm not sure, did you think the week of the 23rd, 24th, is that week too late for you, or you'd rather have it earlier?
I'd rather have it early, yeah.
How about the 19th? Is that moving up a couple days? We could do it right after public welfare.
There was a reason I suggested the week of the 23rd. I didn't pick that out of the blue.
Okay, what is it?
My availability. I won't be available that week of the 16th. You can have your meeting, but I won't be here.
Do it on the 23rd, Monday night then. Give you another day.
The only reason that I didn't pick on Monday is usually as you're getting ready for a meeting like this, some of the stuff at the last minute, and that gives you Monday to get that ready, the Tuesday meeting, that's all.
I don't have last minutes.
The world has last minute stuff.
Okay, 24th?
24th at, do you want to start a little earlier, since it's a single-topic agenda?
That would be nice.
What time? 6?
5:30?
5:30?
Can everybody make it?
5:30 is fine.
George, how about?
5:30?
5:30? All right.
And the subject here is 2007.
2007 Budget. That would be October 24th, 2030.
I'm just confirming what I think you know.
They separated us for a reason. That's right.
Okay. Public Works.
Okay.
Before we move on, let me just ask, I hope you're on the, I don't mean to catch you off-guard, and I know I am, but in terms of the budget limit.
Okay.
Just in terms of what is the state imposed, how does that process? What is that limitation? Again, if you describe that.
Well, because we didn't have very much for new constructions of homes, we were under the 2%.
Yep.
So we don't use that, because last year we were a little over, and so we were able to use that as a basis.
So our levy limit is?
2% plus principal and interest payment on capital loans.
Okay.
For, there are actually payments that would happen in '07, and that's kind of why I asked the questions about at finance about the projects.
No, you've done a good job staying on top of that. Okay, I'm sorry. Moving on to Public Works.
Okay, there's a number of things that we have to talk about in Public Works this evening. A lot of that is listed in the meeting minutes, and I'll try to mention more things than are actually listed here. There's a few things that we are not going to have motions for that we thought originally we're going to, and I'll mention those as we go forward. First of all, we had an issue down on Riverside Drive North with some stormwater runoff. There's some erosion about the middle of that street down there, that's a short dead-end street down on Riverside North, and we had Kevin, Kevin Oyam from Cedar look at that, and.
Which street are we talking about?
This is Riverside Drive North, down at the bottom of the hill, so it goes around Lake Malalo.
I understand Riverside, are you going down the big hill?
Going down the big hill, it's heading north. Right where Hogan's is. You know where Hogan's, Jim and Kathy Hogan live?
Don't know Hogan's, are you down, all the way down by Kells?
Past Kells. Past Kells.
Not that far.
Not quite.
Where's the road?
Well, let's see, is there a pumping station, or what is there, a lift station?
Oh, I know, okay, all right. Is it down by the station?
Yeah. Before you get to that lift station, there's roughly 300 to 400 feet of road that's getting eroded away when we have, when we have water running down through there, and we'd like to fix that. It's a maintenance issue, but we anticipate spending, and we're budgeting in the Public Works budget for 2007 to fix that in the spring. We're not planning on doing anything this year, but there's roughly forty-two to forty-three hundred dollars that we want to spend to fix that.
Are the residents complaining about it?
Yes.
Yeah, they were at the board meeting.
They actually came the month before, and then we looked at it and said, yeah, we probably ought to do something there. And that's essentially what we're gonna do, is put about a three or four-foot extension on the road, make it a little bit wider, and put a little lip on it for a little curb and allow that water to run down, and then kind of have a splash area down at the bottom where it'll all be able to go into the river, or the lake. Minor thing, but we are planning on putting that on the budget. The second thing that I'm gonna turn over to Kevin Oyam to talk about is the special assessment for the Cratley Lane project. You should have copies of that in the Public Works section there, and he'll, do you detail that for us?
I've got additional copies of the assessment report.
And I have some here, too. Do you need one?
I think everybody should have one of those packets. Basically, the Cratley Lane project, since we're at a stage where everything's been completed, we have worked with the contractor, have as-built done, and we finalized all the items as part of that contract. We have final numbers. So what we've done is, we're at that stage to proceed with the final assessment report, which you have a copy of tonight. Basically, we took what the preliminary was and put the final numbers in to come out with what the assessment amounts will be for each affected parcel out there. If you remember, there were two big players, DC.
Is that a new warning, Mark?
No. Probably gonna go past 8 o'clock, I'll check.
As I was going through, I somehow missed it, there was the preliminary assessment? I know the project came in under budget.
Yes.
Which from a residence perspective, that's good, it's gonna cost them less than we had said originally. From an individual perspective, you know, we had the major, we had the two developers absorbing the majority of it, and then about $10,200 per resident.
Yep.
What had we originally projected for the residents?
If you were to turn to page 10, which is Schedule C, that shows you all the affected parcels as part of that project, and the big two players, DC, CI Investments, and Zappa Brothers, they were taking the majority of the cost to the project, and then we have the five different parcels that are abiding against Cratley Lane, and.
No, I understand, I mean, I saw the breakout here. What was it before?
It was like 11,000.
Eleven, yeah. Basically, it's about, it ranges, it's gonna be lower by $981 for the residents, and up to a credit for Zappa Brothers, up around $7,200.
Okay.
That's, that's the range that you're seeing, once we do have all the final numbers in place. So, with that, I mean, if the numbers were to come in higher, obviously, we'd have to go through another public hearing, but since they came in lower, we don't have to go through that process, and.
Basically, what we are being asked to do tonight is to approve Resolution 206-6?
Correct. I believe you have a copy of that. So, the board was to pass this resolution, this would be advertised, or put in a Class 1 notice in the newspaper as part of the process, that's one of the requirements, and then, once that has transpired, then a copy of this particular report, along with this resolution, would be turned over to the affected property owners out there, just to let them know what their actual costs will be. And, along with the resolution, there are some stipulations in there. They have the option of paying everything, or based on what their assessment was, they can, part of the chart, they can defer it over a certain number of years, and that's item number six on there. So, with, with that, it's, yeah, we're just looking for the board to approve the resolution, along with adopting the final assessment report for the, for the project. That's where we're at. If you have any other questions.
What did you say the payments were for the individuals?
I'd be on.
Page 10.
Yep, page 10, Schedule C. That'll give you an idea of what the final cost is.
Okay, I got that, but I thought there was something else where you said if they didn't pay it off all at once, that they could.
Oh, yeah, that's in here.
Item number six.
Yeah, item number six is part of the resolution. There is a breakdown.
Basically, the claim are standard, called amortization repayment schedule if you elect to let the village finance it.
All right. Okay, I see where you're talking about.
Yeah, the assessment policy.
I thought you had it established for each one, in terms of the dollars. Okay, fine.
We're actually working on that a little bit today, because the letter will have to go out offering them different options of whether they want to pay for it in full, finance it over X amount of years, with that interest rate and with those payments.
Anything we should be aware of, Mark?
No concern.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2006-06, which is the final resolution authorizing utility improvements and levying special assessments against benefiting properties on Cratley Lane North, which is from Summit Lane North to the wedge edge of the Zappa property, Village of North Hudson.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, starting over here. Sanders?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Abstain.
Okay. And, Jerry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry, yes. Okay. Six, yes, and abstain.
If I can continue, next on the list was, we're gonna talk about an employee replacement. We had an individual who took another job, was working for the Public Works Department, and has, and has vacated that position, so it is, it is available. However, Public Works initially thought we should go ahead and get that replacement, but we reviewed that at the, at the Finance Committee this evening, and we are, we're gonna take that back to Public Works and ask for a little bit more justification on that requisition, and so we don't have a motion to approve that at the present time. But we do have approval, I don't know, do we need, do we need to go through that one motion where we were trying to approve the temporary?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. I'm wondering, Kathy, if you could read that from.
Do you want?
Do you want to read it?
Well, either way, I'm making a review.
Well, we can do the Finance and Personnel Committee recommends that the Public Works Committee conduct an analysis and develop a recommendation justifying the hiring of a replacement for full-time Public Works employee, and authorize Mark Ekblad to use temporary labor until a permanent replacement is hired, and authorize Mark Ekblad to advertise for the permanent position. So essentially, we're gonna go back and look at it again. The second thing is, is we are, if Mark needs some temporary people.
The timing was missing from that. It was by the November board meeting.
I thought it was decided until there was a replacement.
But as far as completing Section 1.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Completing Step 1.
All right. Let's see, that would be hiring of, justifying the hiring of a replacement for the full-time Public Works employee.
If you want to pay longer than you can.
By the November board meeting.
Or is that rushing?
What's that?
Or is that pushing it too fast?
We have another month, we should be able to do that by then.
I was thinking, you got that, you also got.
Yeah, we got budget and all that sort of stuff, but I mean, this is pretty important. We should be able to do that. I mean, we're doing budgeting, we had a budget for it.
That's true, okay.
So with that addition, that is essentially the motion that I had.
I'll second.
Does everybody understand what we're trying to do there? We're essentially gonna try to justify the position, gonna authorize use of temporary people, as well as authorize Mark to go out and advertise for the new hire, full-time position, in hopes that we get it approved, so that when we get it approved, hopefully in November, he can, can make that hire.
So we don't have to literally start in November doing the recruiting, it's on February. So, okay. Okay? Any other comments, questions? No, all in favor of the motion, signify, it's not a spending motion. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Does Larry want that, or do you want that? Oh, I'll look at that, too, sure. Okay, the, next on the list was Public Works Department Hours of Operation, and Public Works has been operating under the same times as the rest of the staff here in the village. However, we need to change the employee handbook for Public Works, and so the proposed motion, or the motion is to recommend the village board change the Public Works hours in the employee handbook to 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with a one-half hour lunch.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
I'll move approval.
Everybody understand, all this is an administrative correction, just changing the handbook so it's, so it's consistent with reality. If, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The next item was asphalt patching on Station Lane and Station Circle North. Originally, we, we had around $4,000 to $5,000 that we thought we needed to spend for temporary patching of that, that roadway out there. The Public Works met in the last week or so and decided not to spend that money, and decided we can try to get by without patching that asphalt, because we are doing a referendum, and we plan on actually redoing that road next spring or next summer. So, we're trying to save that, save those funds, those maintenance funds. So we're not, there is no motion for that.
Okay.
The next item was salts, or salts, sand salt storage cost, approval requested, and the Public Works Committee has, has been looking at that for a couple of months now, and as I mentioned, I think at our last board meeting, there's roughly $6,000 worth of cost savings that we can generate for the, for the village if we go to a 100% salt mixture, yeah, rather, 100% salt, rather than using a mixture of salt and sand. However, if we do that, at least our original thought was that we needed to get a salt storage facility. When we started looking at the cost of that, I think the lowest cost was roughly $55,000 to build a suitable salt storage facility, and since we're putting that on leased land and looking at the cost savings or the amortization of a building like that over 20 years and what our payments would be, we'd be left with little cost savings after we, after we borrowed that much money and paid it off over a 20-year period of time. And then also, we're putting that building on, on some leased space, and that can complicate that relationship, or, or the future lease of that property, in that it may tend to obligate the village to keep on using that, when in fact, we might not want to do that. That might not work out the best for the village. We've since had some other conversations with, a couple of us had conversations with the city of Hudson, and their salt storage shed is just on the other side of the bridge here, and their main objection for us in using, or their main objection for us using their salt, or, or us buying their salt from them, is they have no real good way of measuring how much salt we would use when they load it into our trucks. And so we're trying to look at that with them. We think if that's the only issue, that there should be some method that we can find a way around that, and there, there may be some technology out there that we could employ, and so we're not ready yet to basically say we have a plan for Public Works. I know Public Works originally, we were going to go forward with that, but at Finance, we decided, let's relook at that one again and see if we can't make a better plan than what we had. So we have no motion there for a new salt storage building.
Okay. Public Safety. Thank you. I liked the idea, by the way, that we're looking at shared services with Hudson. All right, Public Safety?
You'll see on the agenda that there are two items that we'll be discussing after I finish just a brief chair update. As you look at the minutes, you'll see that down towards the bottom of the first page, Village Hall Addition and Renovation. I'll take this opportunity to, if I can, advertise that there will be a meeting 6:30. It's an informational meeting, 6:30 on Thursday evening, at which time we'll have a little slide presentation, show you just some of the, some of the reasons why we believe, and I think I'm saying this, we as a board believe, and staff, that this building needs to be renovated, and an addition needs to be put on. Show you a little bit of the history of this building, this facility, and then move into costs, move into some of the architectural results that we got, and take it from there. As we discussed earlier this evening, it's strictly an informational meeting, no decisions will be made, and it'll be an opportunity for the community to ask questions, and hopefully we'll be able to provide answers. However, I will make this statement right now, I do not expect to be able to have all the answers, and I'm gonna use that easily.
the city of Hudson, and their salt storage shed is just on the other side of the bridge here. And their main objection for us in using, or their main objection for us using their salt, or us buying their salt from them, is they have no real good way of measuring how much salt we would use when they load it into our trucks. And so, we're trying to look at that with them. We think if that's the only issue, that there should be some method that we can find a way around that. And there, there may be some technology out there that we could employ. And so, we're not ready yet to basically say we have a plan for Public Works. I know Public Works originally, we were going to go forward with that, but at Finance, we decided, let's relook at that one again and see if we can't make a better plan than what we had. So we have no motion there for a new salt storage building.
Okay. Public Safety. Thank you. Liked the idea, by the way, that we're looking at shared services with Hudson. All right, Public Safety?
You'll see on the agenda that there are two items that we'll be discussing after I finish just a brief chair update. As you look at the minutes, you'll see that down towards the bottom of the first page, Village Hall addition and renovation. I'll take this opportunity to, if I can, advertise that there will be a meeting 6:30. It's an informational meeting, 6:30 on Thursday evening, at which time we'll have a little slide presentation, show you just some of the, some of the reasons why we believe, and I think I'm saying this, we as a board believe and staff, that this building needs to be renovated, and an addition needs to be put on. Show you a little bit of the history of this building, this facility, and then move into costs, move into some of the architectural results that we got, and take it from there. As we discussed earlier this evening, it's strictly an informational meeting, no decisions will be made, and it'll be an opportunity for the community to ask questions, and hopefully we'll be able to provide answers. However, I will make this statement right now, I do not expect to be able to have all the answers, and I'm gonna use that easel over there as a parking lot, so that the questions that the citizens and the board might have will be documented, and then we'll find the answers to them and perhaps be able to present them at the November 1st information meeting. We've scheduled this meeting to be on Thursday, the second one will be on a Wednesday, to accommodate those people who say, why do you always have the meeting on Thursday? I can't make it because of another obligation. So we picked a couple days, and we'll have some time in between so that we can get those answers. The, another item that I'd like to bring to your attention is...
Would you restate the dates, times, and locations?
Sure. The day after tomorrow, at 6:30, right here, on this very site. We hope that the audiences, or that there are audience area, the gallery here is full and it's standing room only.
So it's October 5?
And November 1.
Okay. And what time?
6:30.
Right here in Village Hall.
Right here in Village Hall.
There'll be door prizes, too.
Well, if you wanna bring them, that's fine. I know you did one.
Fireworks leftover, Mark.
You're on the record now.
All right. And, and John, I would hope that the newspaper is here as well, hope you can come to at least one of the meetings.
I'd be interested in getting all the history of this building if you have available.
Well, that'll be brief.
Oh. We're a little lean up there, too.
All right. You'll also notice on page two, Emergency Management Plan Update and Wildlife Management, and those are also agenda items, and so I'll be bringing, that's actually the next thing that I'll be discussing after I draw your attention to the fact that there is some, the chief's report is towards the back of this section of your packet, and some very interesting tallies and statistical information you might be interested in. I won't go into that, but if you have any questions about it, I know you won't hesitate to ask. So that moves me right into the Emergency Management Plan. This is a approximately twenty-one-page document, which is, there is a plethora of information in there about your community, and I would encourage you to pull this out, save this. This is one of those documents that becomes an excellent reference document as far as who's who on the board, and who's who throughout this entire area when it comes to an emergency. You'll notice that plastered across the front and several pages in here is the word "Draft." This is a draft because you have not yet approved this, and I would ask the chief if he'd like to come up, if there's any comments that you might like to make regarding this, and then we'll ask for a motion to approve it unless you would have some suggestions or would like to amend it somehow. Mark?
Just a couple of brief comments. Excuse me. Approximately four months ago, the Public Safety Committee asked me to revise or take a look at our Emergency Management Plan. Actually, I think the Plan Commission, when it was doing its overall study also, was looking at whether or not this was an up-to-date document. As you can see by the front of the draft, it shows that our last update was July 19th of 2004. So when I took a look at, at the document itself, it's actually a very good working document, other than the fact that there were obviously some logistical things that needed to be updated as far as the names of the board members that are current and some of the other players in the different areas, of the different schools, emergency operations centers and whatnot. There were only two major changes, and actually, they were just additions as far as the verbiage goes, related to the National Incident Management System and the Memorandum of Understanding that we have with St. Croix County in order to utilize their Emergency Operations Center for the fact that if there was a major disaster or a concern that happened in the village, the Village Hall might not be the best location to relocate people or to run any type of emergency operations. And so, the government center, for all intents and purposes, is, most of municipalities in St. Croix County utilize that government center facility because of the makeup, it has phone banks and all of the maps and equipment that would be needed in order for an emergency operations center to be opened. Those are the only two big changes. The board passed a resolution, I believe it was mid of, mid 2005, accepting the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System as methods used during an emergency situation. And so, we had to include that verbiage in the Emergency Management Plan in order to show that we indeed are committed to that. That also becomes important when federal funds are looked at for grant purposes and also for reimbursement for any emergencies that we may have. So those are the only major changes, and updates. I did attend yesterday and today a school safety conference down in Eau Claire. They talked a lot about emergency operations and emergency plans for a school. They're nearly identical as far as their operational usage, and so I did get some additional information on just basically how to put these documents to work. For the most part, these documents have only been used, or they've not been used as far as I'm concerned, they've sat on a shelf, and obviously, we update them every so often. One of the things that I'm looking at, and I know that I've talked to President Larson about it, is the opportunity for us to put together some sort of tabletop exercise or something to actually test this plan and see how usable and how workable it is. I spoke with the Emergency Management Director for St. Croix County, he was also at this training for school safety, and he's open to discussion on that and assisting us with that. So, look for that, I would assume, probably early next year, sometime during the winter when we're a little bit slower and we have a little more time to take care of some of those items.
Certainly is timely that we've got two warnings go off tonight, we're talking about the Emergency Management System.
There is, one of the things we ought to note is that there is discussion in here of an Emergency Management Officer, isn't that, is that the correct title for it?
And actually, I got some updates on that as well from the Emergency Management Director for the county. There was some discussion in the, in the plan about an Emergency Management Director for the village, which I was a little unclear on because basically, the statements then say, in that person's absence, the Chief of Police will assume that role. But there are different, basically different tasks assigned to both of those, and whether or not we would want to double those up. I did find out, and I don't know exactly when, Jack Kovar was gonna give me the information, but the village did pass an ordinance as well as adopt a resolution stating that, and all municipalities, actually in St. Croix County did, that in the absence of an Emergency Management Director in the village, the county's Emergency Management Director would take that role or perform those duties. So, we would have someone available to take care of those tasks.
Would tonight be appropriate if we had any suggested changes to this document?
If you have any, yeah, I can go back and make changes.
The only one that I would suggest is, just under my own contact information, it lists the business phone number as the village number. Okay? It would make, and then the next number is, it lists home phones. So for example, if I were looking at George Klein, George has an office number, 3, and he's got a home number. It would make more sense to put down my cellphone number, rather than Village Hall, 'cause I'm so rarely here.
Okay. I'll change that.
Would it be appropriate, then Larry, for any of us who have a cell number to just have a third column there? Home phone, perhaps a work number and a cell number?
There's really nothing wrong with it. And we could certainly add cell phones, which is to the board. If you, if somebody did come up, and I think about this all the time, you try me at home, if I'm not there, and if I don't call back within one or two minutes, that means I'm probably not there, you try the cell phones. And that's my instructions to the staff.
Okay. And I can get those subsequent cellphone numbers from everyone, obviously off camera.
I mean, I can give you mine right now if you want it.
Do we, is it still appropriate to make a motion to adopt the Emergency Management Plan with those changes or additions?
True.
I'm just suggesting that...
You could do with, you could do it with or without. I would think those would be just administrative changes.
Yeah, you're not gonna get hung up on accurate phone numbers.
No. But other than that, I didn't have any, I thought it was a very well-done document. Did you have to update a lot of it? Did a lot of it change?
A lot of the names and telephone numbers, otherwise, no.
Okay.
Did I move up the list anywhere?
No.
On in charge?
No, to the contrary?
Yeah, thanks. Panties ahead, what they do?
And I guess, just as a last point, the, there is a document in there for the resolution on identifying the succession. That's something that we'll, we can update every year, and so I, I don't know if we wanna revisit this every year, if we just wanna include that as a document that will be slid in as it changes.
I think we should change it every year.
Yeah. It changes every year at the reorg meeting in April, following the elections. Uh, let's see, so it would be appropriate for someone to propose adopting the Emergency Management Plan?
Motion I started to make here, move to adopt the updated Emergency Management Plan reviewed and recommended by the Public Safety Committee, should be designated as October 3, 2006, updated.
I'll second.
Oh, sure you would.
Okay, questions? Okay. All in favor of adopting the plan signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right. Wildlife?
All right, I asked Larry to put this on the agenda only to bring it to your, to the board's attention, I did have a couple questions about pursuing this. Deer continue to be a problem. In fact, Larry, you indicated at the, at the Finance Meeting that you encountered, was it four of them just the other day in a very brief trip?
Well, I just happened to be down at Riverside, not at Riverside Drive, one night, just about sundown, and between driving from Riverside to my house, I had four deer jump out, okay?
Did you scare them?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they're just, in my, the only reason I threw, I just threw that out is kinda like an additional piece of evidence, which I don't think there's probably a resident who hasn't had a close call with a deer recently. I'll have to admit, I was surprised a couple Saturdays ago when I was driving to a meeting at seven o'clock, and there was a deer walking down the main drag on Sixth Street. I hadn't seen one there before, I mean, not on the main...
With their hoof out.
Well...
They're getting friendly. They're getting friendly, they're not scared.
Were you riding one?
So I think George is, I mean, it's, and I know that it seems like, certainly a number of residents have stopped me and said, you know, when are we gonna do something about trying to shrink the size of the herd here in the village? So, I think George's real question is, is there any real objection to the fact that we're gonna have to use lethal means to shrink the herd? Hudson has done it, so have dozens of other communities around the, around the state. City of Madison does it?
Uh, when this topic came up, I was reminded that we did pass a resolution called 2005-12. And as I read that resolution over again, it occurred to me that this really wasn't a resolution authorizing public safety or any other subcommittee of the board to go ahead and engage the DNR or any DNR-certified agency. What this resolution was simply was that, well, I'll read part of it. Be it resolved that the Village of North Hudson is a member of the Hudson Area Intergovernmental Advisory Committee, is supportive of individual community actions by IAC-member communities to reduce the size of the deer herd within each member's respective geographic limits by whatever means the governing body deems most appropriate, and which are also consistent with DNR recommendations. And so, I bring it to your attention that we will be including this, we'll do some more research to get a little better feel for how much this will cost, and will be included in a suggested budget item for 2007. One of the, as I, Gloria provided me with some additional information here, and that is that there is a conservation and development budget item. Is that right? Do I have that right, Gloria? And so, that it will not appear necessarily as a, and there is also some money already in there, carryover? We weren't sure on that.
Well, there's a few thousand.
Okay. Which could be applied to this?
Will it be, I guess it depends on when you're gonna do it, if it's in '06 or...
It'll be '07.
Then we'd be working a new budget to do that.
Okay, whatever the situation is, and again, I'm not asking, we're not asking for a vote tonight, it's just an open discussion item for us to, and for me specifically, to pursue this, so that we can get a better handle on the, on the cost.
Are you looking for a comment?
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's worth pursuing.
Okay.
What kind of cost are we talking about, George? Is it, you seem to take out a dozen of them?
Well, that's exactly it. It, it's the quantity.
Ballpark is about 150 ahead.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to finish my comment.
Go ahead.
Larry used a couple examples, Hudson, Madison. I'd have to say different physical circumstances with each one of those communities.
Yep.
It went, if you really look at it, it boils, it boils down to getting rid of a nuisance. I don't think we can really call him a safety hazard, given our speed limit's 25 miles an hour in ninety percent of the village.
I could take an opposite view of that.
Well...
I mean, I've had two, I've had three of them hit on our street, and they have been accidents.
Yeah.
Two of them were my kids leaving late at night.
Oh.
Okay, literally, at fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah.
'Cause they will literally jump into the car.
We had one actually jump in the side of a squad, what, a year or two ago?
So I, are they, you know, is it a nuisance? Yes. Is it a public safety? Yes. You know, is this the perfect solution? No, because we're gonna keep producing...
Yeah, I'm, I'm presenting the opinion of myself and some people who aren't here who have talked to me about this.
And, yeah.
I, I, that's, items like that, I'm not sure, I'm still unsure if, if it's worth it, given our proximity to the real problem, if you ask me, is right outside our limits.
Just north.
Just north of us.
They'll just come back. They're horrible.
So I, I guess it's a matter of practicality, and I would just like to keep in mind that...
Keep in mind that the original problem was not, was not brought up by people who live on the north side, as all the people down on Riverside.
Yes, but what was the original problem? Getting into gardens, walking around their backyards? That's nuisance.
Well, and, and also potentially just missing them as they're driving to work in the morning. I mean, that was also part of that discussion.
Yeah.
So I mean, they brought up both, both the safety as well as the nuisance.
I just miss dogs once in a while, or cats, or any number of things.
But very honestly, which, which has been more of a practical problem? Potentially running into dogs or running into deer?
For me, I haven't had any problem running into deer in North Hudson, ever. I've, I hit a deer outside of home this summer, but...
And, and I'm not, I'm not even, I'm not supporting this primarily because of where I live, okay? 'Cause I realize that's what's there, and I wish I had a better sense for, you know, how residents in general feel about this issue?
I think you're gonna get a mixed bag, and I'm just, and I'm just throwing a plain devil's advocate a little bit.
And that's good, we should do that here. And if we can't do it here, where are we, where are we gonna do it?
I, it's...
What is the, what kind of cost are we talking about here?
I'm, I'm guessing by the time, I'm looking at probably around eight thousand dollars. That was a number that, when Larry had made a presentation to Public Safety, you were all invited to it, some of you were there, and I think that was, I just remember that number, well, somewhere around, you had a, quite a, you had done quite a bit of research on it. Because it's not just the cost, it's not just, we're gonna bring them in and say, okay, we want you to shoot twenty-five deer. You know, it was more than that. Well, you could say, well, I'll take the hundred and twenty-five dollars times 25, but then there were additional costs on there, that, that's like nine hundred dollars to come in and do this. Okay, then there's fees on that.
I understand, although...
So, that's why I was looking at, I think, Larry, that eight thousand is pretty close to what the...
Fifty or so?
Yeah.
Let's assume that, it looks like it's about a hundred and fifty dollars ahead would be probably a good budget number to use. That would, that would cover the fee for the company that you retain, plus the cost of having the meat processed and delivered to a food shelf, okay? 'Cause that's where the meat goes. So if you use a hundred and fifty, so you took out fifty, yeah, that'd be seventy-five hundred.
So it's roughly fifty?
Okay.
Has...
Fifty the right number, I'm just picking a number.
When did Hudson do theirs, the city, last year, last spring?
Yeah.
Have they, have we got any feedback from them in terms of their, has their situation changed because of what they did, or any...
Well, it was interesting, the only reaction, I think, that I've heard was, you know, they had planned to do, and I'll have to, like, to take out fifty, and they only got like twenty-two, I think it was, or twenty-five? It was significantly less, even though the shooter stayed around.
I guess my view is, I don't wanna contribute any of my tax dollars to this program. I don't think it's worth it.
I, I too, I'm not convinced that it's such a problem that we need to have a bureaucratic response to it.
That's true.
I, I know you've heard more than me, but my question is, what, how do they, which animals do they take out? Do they just go for adult males? Do they take out females? In my yard, I have a mother with, with two little fawns come through. I, I see young animals with their mother all the time. mother all the time. And I'm not real comfortable with the idea of taking out the mother. So, what animals, I, and I rarely see males.
Probably safe to say they're going to take whatever animal comes up to the bait pile.
Whatever they come across. Whatever they get in their sights, they'll take.
Let's be realistic. I mean, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Well, that was, that was my question. I'll just, a deer is a deer.
Yeah.
I was also wondering too, because you had said that they can't take half, they can't take up to half. How do we know how big our deer population is? And the same twelve that come through my yard are probably the same twelve that came up from Riverside and the same twelve-
What's, what's the half?
It's, what you said that the DNR or someone had said that they could take up to half the population of the deer.
No, that's not correct. That's-
The only thing is they can eradicate.
The only thing you can't have is a goal.
How many do we know, how do we know how many we have?
We don't. Nor are we any, nor are we, nor are municipalities required any further to do that kind of analysis. It's the municipality, the elected representatives are allowed to determine what they think is reasonable. That's the way the DNR works.
I, you know, I-
Like it or not, I mean, that's just how they do it. Okay? Because they recognize that the cost of getting that number would, could potentially far exceed the cost of exercising, initiating the program. Because it used to be, to do a flyover, you could be talking fifty thousand dollars.
My, my take on it is, I, I think it may be necessary to do something like this. And my reasoning is because of what I have seen in the village. I, the deer, I think, are becoming more prevalent, and they're getting tame. They're really, I mean, they're getting tame. They don't leave when you go out. I, I go out on my step now, and they just look at me. Like, I mean, they do.
I know, but what, implicit in that is what? Is it a nuisance to you?
Is it a problem? Well, no, I'm-
Is that, is that the problem that?
No, but I just think, I, I think, I do think that they are becoming a safety issue because they're jumping out in front of-
Yeah, they do. But at twenty-five miles an hour, I don't view it as a major safety issue. I honestly don't. And given the climate we're in, eight thousand dollars, we knocked around six thousand dollars for six months and can't decide on something. We're going to throw eight thousand dollars at nominally doing something that isn't going to last a little while? I'd rather get a police car.
Well, there's no question, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to kind of get people's opinions up on the table. The issue will, will eventually get resolved in the budget process.
Do they, do they help foster the deer tech problem? I mean, that's a question. Anybody know?
I just, when we start shooting crows.
I don't know who should answer that.
Yes.
Man, I got a couple neighbors you want to take out too.
You know, what I can tell you is, is-
No, don't say things like that.
Oh, yeah. No, I get a lot. That's all right. That's all right.
A number of times, a number of times, just so you can quantify it, I have counted in the last year where I live, which is in the woods, but there's a deer trail there, and twenty-seven deer have come by in the evening numerous times.
It could be said, then you live on a wildlife preserve.
And so, what's the problem? Yeah.
I mean, you, you moved into a wooded area.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying that there's, my point is, there's getting to be more and more deer.
I think there's less than there were a couple of years ago, from what I see.
From my point of view, I'm in an area-
Don't they kind of take care of themselves to the fact that at a certain point, they only have a certain area that they live in, and once they get overpopulated, they have to go someplace else?
Unfortunately, the urban deer population and the ability of the urban forest and its ability to handle deer density is totally different than the ability of deer in the wild. And the DNR's been here twice and explained it to us. It said there is basically no limit as to how many deer you can house in the village, because they have no natural predator here, and they've got lots to live on. Thank you very much. So, no, the rules change when you deal with the urban wildlife. That's why they call it urban wildlife. It's a different ballgame.
All right, we'll do some more investigation. This has been a very good discussion, I think.
Yeah, it has. And this is probably about the way most people in the village would feel about it.
But I think we're, I think we're going there, George. I think that it will be in need at some point. I'm just personally not convinced we're there yet. And with this expenditure, I'm, I don't know.
How do you know when you're there?
I don't know.
When you look out your door and see a deer.
I think when Mark McLeese is here.
And we're there.
When one shows up at the board meeting.
What's that?
When we've got one, when we've got one for a village trustee.
Yeah, when one's elected.
When they start taking over. Okay. So, I wanted to know.
That'd be an improvement in one spot.
All right. Are we done with that? Have we at least exercised that topic enough for the-
Yeah, we have.
I surely think we have.
All right. Then we'll move on to public welfare. Moving on to public welfare.
Uh, not much to report. Working on the budget. We've done the notification of the leaf pickup, the dates of which are Monday, November sixth, east of Highway thirty-five, and Tuesday, November seventh, west of Highway thirty-five.
Sandra, I have a question about this. It doesn't talk in here, I don't see anything in here about the fee or the cost. I would still have to buy the bags here at the village, is that correct?
No, no.
It says here-
That would be for leaf pickup outside of this program. You would have to buy-
It says here, "Please have bags at curbside." And I saw something else in here about bags. And so, that's, I want to make sure that's clear. Is that the bags that, would I come down here and pick up the leaf bags?
No.
No.
That is outside this program.
In addition to that, you know how we do the spring and the fall pickup?
I just want to make sure people understand that.
It's good because then they kind of-
And does that include, when people buy a bag permit, does that include any kind of trash, or is that just leaves for the permitted?
We have two different types of tags, ones for household waste and the others for yard waste. But what this would be is curbside so that people would not have to haul their bags of leaves and, and grass clippings up to public works, to the dumpsters like we have in the past. This would allow the trucks to go through in two days to complete the entire village and pick it up in front of your house. But they will only pick up leaves and grass clippings and pine needles.
You know, like, those Mondays and Tuesdays, I'm just trying to do a little potential problem analysis here. Mondays and Tuesdays, somebody's garbage is getting picked up.
Uh-huh.
Okay? It's not mine. Okay? So, that Monday, if I have, if, if I have, okay, if I have leaves, I'm going to be setting up bags. So, so if Monday is my pickup day, okay, I'll have my container out there, my recycling container, and I guess just a whole bunch of other bags. Okay? So, I shouldn't pose a problem for the, for the guys picking it up. Because I know they try to distinguish between household waste and yard waste.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
My understanding, any, anything else?
I mean, I like the idea that it's curbside. I mean, that's-
I think they're sending around a special truck, I believe.
They'll probably know when they pick the bag up.
Well, that's probably true.
Well, won't anything outside of the container need to be either tagged or one of these
type of bags? So-
Does the pine needles seem to be separated from the leaves, or they can just be all thrown together?
I don't think so. We didn't get that direction.
Okay, good.
The other item is, we just talked a little bit about the potentially contracting with the animal shelter in Woodbury for a brief period of time until things are worked out on this side of the river for animal, for critters, lost critters.
Can I go back to the fall leaf pickup? You obviously put together a flyer. Was your intent to distribute it?
Well, we put it up and around, and also, we're, we sent it to the paper, also the public, the cable access.
Okay, great. Okay. Park Board.
There's not too much from us either. We're working on the budget. We, next month, hope to have our numbers for the cost of the no trailer parking or trailer parking signs in, for six to eight spaces in, within Ferry Landing Park, which will come out of our park budget. And obviously, it won't be for this year, but will be for next year.
Have you had occasions to talk to the residents that live on that short street down there? I think it's, is it Galahad or Place?
Yes, they've had problems with people parking in there.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect, I mean, just, but as you're evolving your solutions, are we trying to involve them in the process by, I mean, if necessary, almost even inviting them to attend park board meetings?
Susan Overston lives down there, and she's on that street. So, she's been-
Good, okay.
Our main person getting this going.
Okay, super.
And Matthew, can just read it.
Okay. Uh, new business, President's comments. Got two, nomination for the park board. I handed out a document. I don't know, John, did you get one? Howard Navatney, seven thirty-four Woodcrest Drive, has agreed to serve on that on the park board, effective immediately. And Dave Holt has agreed to continue serving as the village's representative to the water utility. So, those are my two nominations.
I need to wait after the village president's nomination of Howard Navatney, and the overwhelming nomination of Dave Holt.
Second.
Questions or comments? Not all in favor of the nomination, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Do you have comments? Do you need an, did you want to do this?
This is for the chief.
Oh, yes, yes. The other thing is, I just wanted to announce that Jerry has indicated that he will be leaving the board for personal reasons about mid-September, or mid-November, sorry. So, we will be missing your sweet face and brilliance here at the meetings, but we will try to carry on.
Okay.
But we do thank you, and you'll be here. So, this is October, you'll be here through the November meeting. So, but thank you. You will be here for November, right?
That's correct.
Good, good. All right. And-
You need a motion to convene?
Yes.
A move that we convene into closed session pursuant to nineteen point eight five, one C, discussion regarding employee performance-related matters.
I'll second that.
That needs to be a-
Roll call vote. Okay, roll call vote to go into closed session. Sandra?
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, okay.
Good timing.
We convene into roll call, or convene, we'll take two minutes, two-minute break, then we'll convene into closed session, and we'll reconvene and go home.
We're going to be talking about the deer we have on staff.